I now call to order this July 1st Friendswood City Council Meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Bobby Kirkpatrick, Friendswood Friends Church. You all stand, remain standing, and after the prayer we'll say the pledges.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we're thankful to live in this city and in this community, a place that has felt like small town and often is growing and getting bigger too. And so, Lord, as we look to future decisions, we look to you, look to you for guidance for the future, for what you have for us, and help us to be good listeners to you and to one another. Lord, we pray that for our world right now in general, that we want to be good listeners to one another, help us to seek more to understand than to be understood, and to try to reach across and partner together with those that are often on the opposite sides of issues from us, help bring unity through the way in which we relate to one another. Lord, we pray for peace in our world, peace in our community, and Lord, for this place, we ask that your blessing and as the council meets, Lord, help to give them your wisdom and discernment. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thanks, Bobby. Okay, item four, City Council, comments and reports, volunteers, Councilmember Branson.
I just wanted to share some sad news. Cheryl Boyan, who has been very involved and engaged in our community for a long time, specifically with Friendswood ISD and the Friends of Schools Museum, her father actually served here on council in the 60s, she passed away this morning, so please keep her in your prayers. Family name was Hader, Hatcher, I said Hader, that was baseball, I'm sorry, we were just watching the Astros, I'm so sorry. Cheryl Hatcher Boyan, so just keep the family in your prayers, please.
I'd just like to comment on Concert Series. James Tony, our Parks and Rec Director, thank you so much, sir. We had an outstanding concert series this May and June, just finished up Friday night. In addition to the concert Friday night, we also had an event we call The Gathering, which celebrates all the volunteers and city staff here in Friendswood, and that was a great event before the concert. And we also gave out some awards for the photo contest during the concert on Friday, which was pretty neat, and I absconded with one of those award winners, I'm gonna put it up in my office here, it's such a great photo, so, anyway, great show.
I can go. Wanted to mention some of the great trips that the Senior Activity Center is going to be going on, they're gonna be really busy this July, they're going to Village on the Park for Bingo and Lunch here in Friendswood, and then that's on July the 11th. On July the 16th, they're gonna head to Heritage Village, Clyde Gray House Museum, and Picket House in Woodville, Texas, and you can reserve your spots, $25 per person, and it's from eight to four in a tour, ingratuity is included. And then on July the 18th, they're out to lunch at the Stingery Restaurant in Marina, and that'll be at Crystal Beach, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., $5 per person, lunch is on your own. And then Friday, July the 19th, they have the Hometown Opera in Pasadena, Texas, and that's $15 per person from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. And you can go online and sign up for these trips if you really wanna attend, they were doing a lot of really neat things. Friday, July the 26th, the A.D. Players Theater, Fiddler on the Roof, will be in Houston, and that's off of Westheimer from 4:00 p.m. to 11:15 p.m. And dinner's on your own at the Central Market, and that's $25 per person. So they're really busy over there, if you wanna go and join, you only have to be 60 years old, but get a physical and join up and go to some of these great events that they go to all the time, it's a lot of fun. Blessings, the lunch at Blessings Hotel and Blessings is always a good one to go to.
Yeah, I just had one quick thing, I wanted to thank Nikki Bender and Brian Mansfield for providing some of the City Council members with the, I'm gonna have to read this, National Incident Management Systems Overview Training, we called it NIMS all day long, but that half-day course was very, very insightful and good training for City Council members, so I wanted to thank them and their department for putting that on for us.
Hopefully, if we're all ready for emergency operations, we won't have to use that training.
Well, I agree, better be ready, though.
Yes.
Can I thank, can I thank somebody?
Councilmember Hanks, yes, definitely.
I was a little shocked to hear about Cheryl, I'm so sorry about that, and offer my condolences. Thank you to the Knights of Columbus for the lunch at The Gathering or the dinner at The Gathering, I think they've been doing that for a while, and Scott Gordon, did he also contribute?
Yes, yes.
And all the others that helped out, that's a great tradition, and thanking our city staff members and volunteers, that's been going on for decades, just another good thing about Friendswood community.
Yes. All right, item five, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, City Council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with rules of decorum. Chris Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I come and I, to talk about specifically item 10D, which is a resolution that's gonna be before you, talking about amending the rules that facilitate the public debate with this council. And the only time that we have to come and actually talk to you about specific items is during the public comment, which is already limited to three minutes, and then during the public hearing, and of course, we all recall that on June 3rd, we had a very spirited public hearing, which the council had to hear from, five minutes from each one of the citizens about a very contentious issue. I went to the City Council's retreat last Saturday where this specific issue was discussed about the concept of changing these rules, I ordered you to vote no on changing the rules, because it's described as streamlining the process, but what it actually does is narrows the ability of citizens to come to you and voice their concerns. Something complex like a tax increment reinvestment zone is very difficult to get your thoughts out and your ideas to counter those proposals in three minutes, I can tell you, because I'm already now burned through a minute just introducing what I'm here to talk about. So, I encourage the council, I heard the council at that retreat talk about transparency in this government, engaging the public is the tenet of good government, and so I encourage you, when you're talking about looking at streamlining a process, streamlining in a way that narrows the public's engagement with the council is not a good, not a good idea, especially on the heels of such a contentious public hearing where these issues were so personal to so many, the idea that the response from this government would be to limit the amount of time that they hear from the citizens, I will tell you, doesn't look like your, the citizen's best interest is at the heart of this. So I would encourage the council to vote no on any items that limits the public's engagement, especially at public hearings where these complex issues are constantly, are consistently discussed. So that's what I wanted to talk about today. Also, with regard to the minutes, I would encourage the council from that June 3rd minute, June 3rd meeting to look careful at those minutes, I would encourage you to pull it off the consent agenda and take a careful look at those minutes to make sure that you feel that those minutes accurately reflect what was discussed during that public hearing, given that it's been such a contentious issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Phil Radesso.
Good evening, council, mayor. I come for you tonight because, as you know, when I ran for City Council in 2018, and there were all kinds of items then about leadership and being open with everyone, and I asked what happened to leadership a year ago when things became apparent that there was going to be a development there that's down the street here with the Boulevard and all of that, and asked why leadership didn't bring all the parties together to resolve this issue instead of it being as contentious as it has. I've watched neighbors, and some of them are friends, and I've watched them, and very spirited, and that, and then hearing from them and talking to Mr. Tanos, you get the thing that there was a lack of leadership other than direction on what the city wants, not what the citizens want, and true leadership brings all the parties together and comes out with something that helps everyone along with the citizens of this, because you know, Mayor, you and I have had conversations about attorneys and lawsuits and that, and that nobody wins that, and I can't help but to think that somebody is not gonna be happy in this situation, and the taxpayers are gonna end up with having to do something that they're not gonna like, and I just wish there had been more leadership. Thank you.
Item five, or I'm sorry, item six, work session topics. Receive and discuss an update regarding the city of Friendswood Capital Improvement Projects presented by Hill, R.E.S., Director of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and council, here to give our quarterly Capital Improvement Projects update. As always, feel free to interject, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have. So, I'll jump right in. The first project we have for an update is Black Hawk Boulevard Phase 2B, this is the portion that you see under construction on Black Hawk Boulevard at this time, the, one of the major milestones that's been met is the installation of the water line. Large majority of the underground work was gonna happen in this phase, so we're not gonna see the next phase take as long, but I did want to share with you guys that we're way behind schedule from where we wanna be, there's been quite a few forces beyond the contractor's control that have affected his ability to finish this project in a more timely fashion. They're asking for 132 workdays in delays outside of their control, when, we've been going back and forth, we haven't decided on what exactly that number's gonna be, but it's gonna be less than that, probably half of that, that we're going to do a change order sometime in the near future to reflect the delays that have been out, been out of his control. These delays have been weather-related, they've been material-related, and they've had some long lead times on some items. The important thing that, to know moving forward is, since the start of this project, there have been some changes in the availability of material, and we've been kind of convinced of that, things like lime to stabilize subgrade, they're having to order that two weeks ahead of time, and how does that affect us? They're trying to guess that they're gonna be ready for lime in two weeks, and there's not gonna be weather-related issues in the meantime, and so, we've got a kind of, we've got that kind of in the back of our mind right now, that those are the challenges that are gonna be faced moving forward, not this, not, this contractor's not the only one facing this, but this is a bit of a smaller job in the grand scheme of things, and so that's the challenges that they're gonna have moving forward. Right now, we're looking probably at November timeframe for the completion of this project, so hopefully, next time I come back to speak to you, we're moving along on this. Also wanted to share on Phase 2C, that's the rest of the project to complete Black Hawk, we are currently in the engineering phase and repackaging those bid documents, we expect the plans for that to come into the city here later on this month, and then city staff will review it, comment on them, and from there, we will start preparing the bid documents so that we can get that out for bid in the summer. Those two projects were Harris County Precinct 2 partnership projects are, for the past two years. This year, we have another application that was submitted by the city that has been awarded, and we got that news here recently. The city has been notified that the precinct has decided to partners with us to signalize the intersection of Bay Area Boulevard and Christian Road, that's at the very corner of the city limits right there, next to League City. The large majority of the traffic going through that intersection is coming from League City, and League City has acknowledged that, they have been really forthcoming in helping the city, and we, this is a path board, you might remember, last year, we had to put up stop signs at that intersection because of a multitude of T-bone accidents and accidents that could have been prevented by a stop sign. Since then, we haven't had the same issues, so the stop signs are obviously working, but in the meantime, League City performed a traffic study at that intersection and determined that a signal was needed at this intersection, so that's how all this came together. We have asked for Harris County to take this into their inventory of their signals and become the responsible entity moving forward to keep up with that light and keep that going for us. Fire station number two, the great news about this project is the keys have been turned over to the city, and it's a move-in-ready facility, we have some little minor things that need to be taken care of in between now and the, at the time the fire department, volunteer fire department takes possession of that building, but that is all in the works right now, and we'll have a functioning fire department, fire station here in the very near future, so. 24-inch water line crossing project, this is a water line that is going to connect downtown to Black Hawk Boulevard, this is a project that is being funded by the city's ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act, and we are moving close to a significant milestone on the engineering plans, 60, 90% plans, which will be submitted to the city, and we'll be moving forward to have that bid here in the next couple of months. The tank rehab project, you'll see the, on that picture right there, the old water tower, it's been updated, repainted, looks terrific, and so that was one of the three that have been completed in the past year, three water facilities, we have a fourth, and that's a ground-source tank at Surfers Water Plant Number One, which is behind the church at the intersection of Black Hawk and FM 528, that is a pretty significant tank for our water system, and that's not really something that we wanna have down for a couple of months for maintenance, so we're gonna wait, let the summer pass, and once we have the peak of usage in the summer, we'll go back, revisit this, and get that tank repainted there also. And next, I'm gonna jump into several projects or initiatives we have going with the Houston-Galveston Area Council, these are all projects that are being led by the HGAC. First project is the Friendswood Master Trail Plan, that project is, the request for qualifications have been closed that period, and we are currently evaluating the qualifications of several consultants that have submitted, we'll be moving forward to that here pretty soon, the important thing to know about this, and you might think, hey, we have a parks master plan that should include this, well, this expands upon the parks master plan, this is gonna get into the nitty-gritty of trail planning, so. Next is the Friendswood Parkway Corridor Study, another project that is being led by the Houston-Galveston Area Council, the consultant for that has been selected, and they're going to be getting into the thick of things here pretty soon, they have not submitted yet a public participation plan, that's one of the next milestones that they have, but basically, this PPP is going to outline what the schedule's gonna look like for public meetings, they'll be seeking public input into, when moving forward, of what the parkway would look like, and giving an opportunity for input into anything else that the public might want to say about the parkway. The public meetings, the dates of that are not known at this time, but as soon as we know that, we will share that along, and we'll also share the link to the website that the HGAC is developing for this project, that's project-specific, that will allow citizens to engage that consultant as well. Then we have several projects that we're calling the carryovers being projects, this is all being funded by some money that has been building up into the HGAC coffers, that is federal money and it needs to be spent in the next two years, so about a year ago, the HGAC came to all the communities in the area and asked for projects that we felt could be completed within a two-year timeframe, and these are projects that were submitted to them, these are projects that are FM 528, along FM 528, that are designed to reduce congestion and improve traffic flow. These traffics, these projects include some additional turning lanes at Bay Area Boulevard, a new northbound right turn lane at Winding Way, a, some dual left turns at 518, and restripping of Sunset as well to increase, facilitate the movement through those intersections. Then the fifth project that they have is the Friendswood Parkway, what we're calling the E-phase, that's the environmental and preliminary engineering for this project, the E-phase is going to really rely on the completion of the corridor study, and basically, it's gonna get this project much further along, and it'll include also the area between the city limit and FM 2351, that's, that's all, that area is gonna be researched for the environmental phase, and we'll get some plans out of this that will be shovel-ready. And again, the HGAC is the one leading this effort right here, and again, the opportunity for public input for the planning study will be here, and we'll, we'll pass that along as soon as we get those dates free. If you have any questions, comments?
Thanks, Hill, appreciate it, good job.
Mayor, we are five minutes ahead of schedule relative to the public hearing posting for the rezoning application, so could we go to the city manager's report?
You bet.
And I will take exactly five minutes.
Okay.
There are a number of things that I'd like to highlight this month, as you know, this is a busy time of year for our Parks and Recreation Department, there's a little holiday coming up here in a couple of days known as the Fourth of July, which is a very, very big deal, not only in Friendswood but across the country. July is National Public Works, or not Public Works, sorry, Parks and Recreation Month, and we take this time to recognize all the Parks and Rec departments throughout the country, but those especially here in Friendswood for the hard work they do to maintain a spectacular series of parks and offer the programming that ranges in age from little kids all the way to senior citizens, so thank you to James and his staff and all the hard work that y'all do this month, year-round as well. Next, I'd like to highlight our Food Truck Tuesdays that's been taking place this summer, this is not a Friendswood-led effort, this is Farmer's Marker, Friendswood Farmer's Marked-led effort, but every Tuesday night in June and July, you will have food trucks that line up outside of Stevenson Park and offer a variety of fairs to our parkgoers and residents that are interested in partaking, it's usually pretty crowded even when it's raining outside, so we encourage folks to get out and try some, some new and different types of foods here in the city. For those Swifties out there, I hear Taylor Swift, our cover band, is coming to Friendswood in September, tickets went on sale this past week, and I think they're sold out, are pretty darn close to being sold out, there's a Taylor Swift cover band that will be coming to Centennial Park on September 20th at 8:00 p.m., from what I understand, she sounds just like Taylor Swift, so if you or your family members are Swifties, please feel free to purchase their last remaining tickets and attend, it's a great opportunity to enjoy a night out with your family, and also proceeds will go to benefit the parks.
I think John Ellisore is a Swiftie.
Yep.
Okay.
Today was Battle of the Patches, there was a competition between Friendswood Police Department and Pearland Police Department to see who can get more blood donated, if I'm a little slow this evening, I apologize, I donated some blood, so I'm operating with a few less cells. Our very own Glenda Faulkner got a mug today for donating a gallon's worth of blood, I don't recall her being in there that long, but apparently she's donated so much that she got the gallon mug. Do we have a tally on who won that Battle of the Patches? I don't see anybody from PD here, so I'll let y'all know later. Next up, our police department was recognized by FLOC, Safety Power Group, FLOC are the automated license plate readers that are located throughout the city, this is leveraging technology to better equip our officers with real-time data as to who's coming in and out of the city, especially those that have warrants out for their arrests, out of the over 3,000 communities that use FLOC, Friendswood was recognized as the top 20 user in the country, we applaud FPD's efforts to leverage this technology and look for other ways that we can get better technology to serve the community and provide a safer environment. The Knights of Columbus recently made a donation to our emergency services departments, a check was given to our police department as well as our emergency medical services department for the hard work they do to help them continue their efforts, so thank you to the Knights of Columbus and thank you to FPD and EMS. Master Drainage Plan, several months back, the city of Friendswood executed an inter-local agreement with the Drainage District to undertake a master drainage plan for the city in partnership with the Drainage District, shortly after that agreement was signed and dotted, the city of Friendswood acquired a grant through Texas Division of Emergency Management to fund a master drainage plan for Friendswood, it was a 90-10 grant in which the city got 90% of the funds from state sources, as such, the Drainage District has requested to take their share of what was previously gonna go towards this effort and look at other areas within their jurisdictions that are outside of Friendswood to sort of complement our master drainage plan. The agreement allows for the separation of, allows for these actions to be undertaken by both parties, we feel that now that we have the grant, it's a better way to maximize the use of our funds as well as theirs, so thank you to the Drainage District. Hurricane Preparedness, we are in the thick of hurricane season, there's already been two named storms, the third shortly on the heels of the first two, if you haven't signed up for receiving emergency alerts, we encourage all residents and folks in the area to sign up. in the area to sign up and also to look at the different needs that they may have for their home, whether those are go-bags ready to move in an instant if they need to, or if they have all the hurricane equipment and food supplies at their home to be prepared for if we have a hurricane or tropical storm. If you don't have flood insurance, I can't stress it enough, please get flood insurance even if your house is never flooded. It is a very cheap investment and pays dividends in the back end if, God forbid, anything ever happens to your home during a flood. It does take 30 days to take effect, so sign up sooner the better. Lastly, I'd like to recognize the 55th anniversary of the Apollo 11 landing on the moon. Our Friendswood Library will be hosting a celebration later this month, Monday, July 15th at 7:00 PM. Retired NASA engineer Harold Benson will be there to explain the NASA's space program's impact on Friendswood. As you know, quite a few residents in the area do work for NASA or have had family members that work for NASA and it's left an indelible mark on our community and we'll be talking about that on July 15th. And that is it. I think I took just five minutes.
Good job, Rod. Item 7, Zone Change Request for 3111 West Parkwood Avenue, Special Use Permit to Allow NAC's Use Number 237 Heavy and Civil Engineering Construction with an Underlying Zoning of Business Park. It is now 5:30. And I call to order this public hearing regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow NAC's Use 237 Heavy and Civil Engineering Construction to be located at 3111 West Parkwood Avenue, which is zoned Business Park, being 15.5244 acres out of BD, SEAL, and Forewood Survey, Section 5, Abstract Number 625 and I, and GNRR Company Survey, Section 23, Abstract Number 624, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views on the proposed specific use permit. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary. At the podium, each participant shall give his/her name and address in order to provide a proper record of this hearing. Rules allow each person five minutes to present information, however, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing. Aubrey Harbin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this subject property, the zone change map is up on the board, so the underlying zoning is Business Park District. Currently, this tract is undeveloped, has limited frontage on West Parkwood Avenue with the L shape, so the bigger part of the parcel sits quite a ways back off of 528. We have a proposed development for this property. Standard Constructors Incorporated is a family-owned company. Some of its members live here in the city of Friendswood and want to move their business here. So they are currently located near Houston, near Hobby Airport. Their proposed development here will include a three-story office building that is going to sit up towards the front of the property. And then this property is encumbered with a lot of difficult things on it to develop, so there's a drainage bypass. If you drive down there, you see the tall communications tower that's been there, I think, since around 1980, and it has a building built at the base of it, so all that will remain. So there are huge guy wires from that tower that go in all directions on the property. There's a pipeline traversing the property, so it's pretty amazing they were able to figure out a way to use the property. So there's two single-story equipment buildings that are gonna store their equipment. The access to 528 to be able to get to 45 and 35 for transport of their equipment is a beneficial part of this location. So they would house 40 to 60 employees here in Friendswood. Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing on June 13th and there were no, no one spoke in opposition of the request, and the commission voted six to zero in a motion to approve the requested zone change.
So that tower is still operational? Any cell antennas on there or anything?
I'm assuming so.
Yes, yes. I drove out there.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing. Item 7B, Consider An Ordinance Regarding A Proposed Specific Use Permit To Allow NAC's Use Number 237 Heavy and Civil Engineering Construction To Be Located At 3111 West Parkwood Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
I just have a, I wanna confirm something, Aubrey. There's an eight-part test for granting this specific use permit. I'm just confirming for the record that this specific use and development meets all eight requirements.
Yes.
Thank you.
Aubrey, from what I understand, the equipment is going to be on location, but when it's in use and it's gone, it could be gone for two or three or four weeks at a time, and then it comes back. We're not gonna see a huge influx of traffic onto 528, I don't presume.
I don't think so. That did come up from the applicants. They're here, if you wanna talk to them. That did come up and they are located close to Hobby Airport, indicated that they've not had traffic issues where they're at now.
Talking about just moving pieces of construction equipment in and out?
They move in and out, and it might be gone for two or three weeks at a time. So I mean, it's not like they're just, they're moving equipment every day.
Equipment gonna be every day, is what you're pointing at. Just why I had one other statement real quick, and that is that absolutely.
At our meeting, that was asked also, and I believe the answer was that most of their equipment stays out for extended durations and is not at the facility very often.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
And Tom, this is gonna drain into Dickinson Bayou. Is that the drainage plan?
We will, they'll turn in more detailed drainage, like civil plans for drainage and utilities of a later date. This is just conceptual.
Okay.
It'll go.
Back to P and Z?
This will be the site plan approval, so the site plan will not go back to P and Z. They will have to flat, and then we'll do the detailed civil plans for utilities.
But you are correct, it is within the Dickinson Bayou watershed, so it'd go to Dickinson Bayou, Alton Miller. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ellisore, that is Tom Hinckley. He's the Chair of Planning and Zoning. In case you haven't met him yet, wonder why.
Please add this first.
Oh, good, okay. Don't usually just let anybody just jump up and start babbling. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Show it seven to nothing. Hey, going to, item nine, Business Items, 9A, Consider Authorizing A School Crossing Guard Agreement With Clear Creek Independent School District For School Year 2024, 2025. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Rod, do you wanna?
Just a brief statement. Historically, the city of Friendswood has employed within their police department part-time employees that operated as school crossing guards. Those services are no longer being provided by the city of Friendswood. They are employees now of the school districts. CCISD has asked to execute a contract similar to what they do with other cities within their jurisdiction, and that is even though they employ the school crossing guards, that they ask the city in which those schools are located to cover the cost of those services. So our share of that will be $18,534 for the upcoming school year. This allows the district to determine from a safety standpoint where they would like to house those crossing guards. We're simply providing them the financial mechanism to do so.
Okay. Any comments, questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes seven. Item 9B, Consider Authorizing The First Amendment To The Grant Administration Services Agreement With Grant Works, Inc., For The U.S. Department Of Housing And Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Funds, CDBG MIT 24-065-030-E485, Administered By The Texas General Land Office. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Hill?
Just wanted to say, this is a housekeeping item. We do have a contract with them that agrees the billing schedule in line with what the state likes to see.
Okay, thank you, sir. Very straightforward. All in favor? Seven to nothing. Item 10, Proposed Resolutions And Ordinances, 10A, Consider On First Reading And Ordinance Amending Chapter 70 Streets, Sidewalks, And Other Public Places, Article 3, Construction, Sections 70 to 77, Restricted Use, 70 to 79, Maximum Plant Height, 70-80 Minimum Branch Height Above Street Gutter Flow Lines, and 70-81 Extending Into Street With Friendswood City Code To Revise The Permitted Height Of Plants, Trees, And Branches In And Over Restricted Areas Including Visibility Triangles And Other Traveled Public Ways. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
This is just a cleanup measure. Historically, the city of Friendswood has established a minimum of 10-foot canopy for trees limbs over hanging streets, public right-of-ways. Our building code requires a height of 13 feet before the start of every school year. When the bus routes go, our bus drivers go do their initial routes, they give us a list of trees that require trimming. By going from 10 feet to 15 feet, we allow for that cushion that we need to ensure that both large vehicles such as school buses, as well as RVs and fire engines can adequately access our roadways without getting damaged from the tree limbs.
Gotcha. Questions? All in favor? Hey, Item 10B, Consider An Ordinance Amending The City's General Budget For Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 By Approving Budget Amendment 8 And Providing For Supplemental Appropriation And/or Transfer Of Certain Funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any questions on this? All in favor? Unanimous. 10C, Consider A Resolution Adopting An Updated Vision Statement For The City Of Friendswood. Trish, do I have a motion?
You have a motion with some additional language. The Friendswood City Council is dedicated to supporting a safe, family, and business-friendly community by providing quality public services, and the rest is virtually the same.
Okay, I will second that motion. Everybody get that?
So, do you wanna talk about it a second?
So, at Councilmember Hank's request, there's a revised statement before you autodidus. It's two sentences, similar to what was included in your backup material. The changes are in red, the additions underlined, the strike-through is what's being removed from it. Again, this was a result of the retreat that took place two Saturdays back, trying to adopt an overall vision for this city council for the coming years. The things that made it into this vision statement were based upon the comments that were given by councilmembers at the retreat, and ultimately, should council adopt this vision statement, the basis of all of the city's operations are gonna funnel into these statements.
May I say something?
Yes. We have a motion and a second, so now we're in the discussion phase.
So, first, I'm gonna thank the staff. I think you did a great job of taking notes of everything that we said. I just feel like a vision statement is going to be here for several years before we revise it, but the passionate things that we talked about, when each council member spoke in passion or passionately about things, it was about the community, the strong sense of community, family atmosphere, being friendly to business, and balancing the tax rate. So it was quality of life, and so I didn't wanna rewrite a whole mission statement because y'all did a great job, and I really, every one of us could write a mission statement, a vision statement. I mean, that would be different. So I just thought if we could add those words that talked about safe, since we all mentioned that, family, and then business-friendly, that would, I think, encapsulize what we were most passionate about, and then just left the rest pretty much the same.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think the English language has too many words, you know, so trying to pick the exact perfect word.
Right.
Other languages probably be a lot simpler.
We don't have to amend anything, she's already done that.
She's did that with her motion. I will ask, this is not a requirement that the vote be unanimous, but for this to be effective, it needs to be something that the council in totality supports. So if there is any concerns with it, then we need to go back to the drawing board, by all means, that's fine. For it to be successful, we need unanimous support.
I agree.
I think your modification really hits closer to the point for me.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, we got a vision statement. Item 10D, Consider A Resolution Amending The City Council's Rules And Procedure To Refine The Procedures For Purposes Of Efficiency And Conformance With State And Local Laws. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
In reading through it, I didn't see where we were limiting the public. I saw more maybe restrictions on how we're to proceed more so than I saw the public. The public still gets three minutes and can be allowed additional minutes if the mayor or presiding officer wishes them to speak longer. I saw more cleaning up how we're supposed to act than I did see limiting or restricting the public access to visit with us about it in a public comment situation. Is there a lot of difference from what we did before?
I believe the one limiting thing is going from five minutes to three minutes on the public hearing. Everything else is, I believe, as you said, that that would be the one limiting thing. We did canvass and did a survey of 20 cities nearby. They always had, appeared the same number of minutes for their public comment section as they did for their public hearing, so we were just conforming it to that, but that was, that would be a limiting thing, I would think. That's the only thing I can think of in the.
But just to be clear, the presiding, in this case, mayor, could give them additional minutes if necessary.
Absolutely, we did not take that out.
So it doesn't say it can't happen.
Do we have to leave that in there on the five, or can we go back to the five? And I wasn't here on the discussion on the retreat about why we limited it down. And when I see Bel Air on the list, I kinda look at that as the city that it's good to follow on the way they do the rules to where they're very, I guess, resident-friendly. So is there, why did we go from the five to the three?
We're just trying to be consistent across. We've just noticed that most cities do have the same amount of time for each, with the mayor being able to extend the period of time, but these are your rules, so.
Yeah, I agree with everything that the changes we've made, but I still think that we ought to leave it at five minutes. I think, having been in P and Z for so many years and then being on council, I think it just gives everybody who's nervous at the podium, gives them a chance to really make their points, and two more minutes per person isn't gonna really extend the meeting that long in my mind. I'd rather keep what we have.
And I think, I'm okay with that too, to Mr. Johnson's point, you know, allowing, in the case of the public hearings, to go five minutes is what we've been doing, and I would be okay with leaving it at five minutes.
But more importantly, clarifications for two-thirds votes for our part, that sort of thing.
That's, I don't think anybody has questions.
Clear it up for state law.
Yeah, state law, I agree with that.
Since y'all haven't voted yet, we're gonna need an amended motion.
I understand that part.
Okay, just making sure.
But I think John wanted to say something.
Well, I move that we amended to have it consistent, five minutes for the public comment and for the later.
Second.
Well, wait a minute. Wait, so I'm okay with the public hearing part going to five minutes. Public comment, three minutes, I think, is enough typically. Public comment, people come in and typically, half the time, they're talking about something that's not even on the agenda for that night. So, you know, it's good to let people, I think, have their say on anything they wanna talk about, because some cities even limit what you can say in public comment to only, has to be agenda-related. We don't do that. We allow people to come in and if they got a beef with the leash law or something, they could come and rail against us, at us for three minutes and have their say. But then, when we're in a specific topic like a zone change, when we're at a public hearing, and people wanna get up there and make an argument for or against, you know, I think it's reasonable to allow five minutes, and much as I hate extended meetings sometimes, I think it's only right that we. So I think if you would amend it to say, hey, just change it, the public hearing comment, leave that at five minutes as opposed to what we have written in the thing, it's three.
I agree.
So I will second your amended motion.
Thank you.
So now we vote on the amended motion?
Correct.
All in favor of the amended motion? Okay. Okay, so now we have the amended motion. Now, we need to vote on the motion.
So by default, you're approving the resolution as drafted, save and accept. So by, by default, you're approving the resolution as drafted, save and accept five minutes for public hearings.
Going back to maintain the public hearing part is five minutes.
And all the other things about us having to make a motion first, all of that is still in there, so that's good. Yeah, okay, that's good. Or, you know, not having to do it.
Not having to do it.
All right.
So we vote for it.
So now, we have a motion and a second.
With the exception.
Well, this-
You're going back to the original motion as in that the public hearing used to be five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all in favor of that? Yay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Last time.
And what about, what else?
That's it.
That's it for that?
That item's done.
That item's done. Well, thank you. Good grief. All right, item 11, Consent Agenda. I need a motion to approve our consent.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, moving on. Item 12, Executive Session. It is now five-
10:00.
We will now recess into and conduct an executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to seek the advice of the city's attorneys regarding cause number 18-CV-0108, Tostado versus City of Friendswood in the 122nd Judicial District Court, Galvez I now reconvene the open meeting of Friendswood City Council and announce that in accordance with Section 551.102 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in the executive session. Item 13, Adjournment, there being no further items, this meeting is now adjourned.